I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She doesn't want to leave.
I think she can have the seat.
Pastor Carlson?
Sorry, pray. God in heaven, I thank you so much for the privilege of being here. So many times we dump a load of requests on you and say thank you now and again. Tonight, I want to thank you for much and ask for one thing. I thank you for these young ladies, Father, and how they represent our community and their generation so well. I thank you, Father God, for Rich Walker and for the honor that he will receive and for his years of service to our community. I thank you for our mayor and our council members and heads of departments and staff. I thank you, Father, for the service groups in our community and for their families and their involvement, their contribution. I pray and thank you for our police department, fire department, from the chief down to those who are working on the street with the first responding. Father, for those who are dispatched, those who are working in the office. I thank you, Father, for our schools. I thank you for our churches who stand on the absolute authority of the Word of God. I thank you for our community itself, for our citizens and their families. I thank you for life, physical and spiritual. I thank you for your Word and your Holy Spirit and your grace and truth. And I thank you for my city and for my state and for my country. And I ask one thing, Father, that you would reveal yourself to each one of us in your way and in your time. You are a God who can be known and who wants to be known. So I would ask, as we would thank you for all these blessings, that you would reveal yourself to us. And these things I praise you for, and this thing I ask you for, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Item number four, any agenda, are agenda changes? Does the commissioners have any agenda changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number five is special presentations, Jubilee Days Parade Awards, and I will turn this over to Mr. Richard Walker, who is the executive director of the Jubilee Days Committee. Rich?
Thank you very much, Mayor Hill. Members of this council, thank you. First of all, on behalf of the Jubilee Days Festival Commission, I would like to thank the City of Zion for all its support, both monetary and the much-needed in-kind services that you provide so that the festival in general and the parade specifically can be held as smoothly and as efficiently as I think it does. That includes the Zion Police Department, the Zion Fire and Rescue Department, and Zion Asda, who are all instrumental in making the event something for which we are proud. I would personally like to thank the individual members of the Jubilee Days Festival Commission. Many of them are here tonight. Chief Steve Dumian, Steve, or Chief John Lewis, Clerk Diane Burkhemper, Sherry Neal, and Carl Lobo.
Right next to you. Rich?
What?
Right next to you.
I'm just seeing if there's anybody else. I don't want to miss anybody. Sorry, we didn't rehearse this. Onto the awards. First of all, our specialty award this year goes to the unit that has the best presentation of effort and enthusiasm and as the beginning of the meeting suggests, why the winners this year were the 2016 Zion Queens.
Hey, what a photo op, this.
It's easy when the theme is "Reaching for the Stars" for Queens.
Our second prize is the theme prize, which is not surprisingly the best presentation of the parade theme, which, as Sherry just noted, was "Reaching for the Stars." And the winner for the 2016 Jubilee Days Parade is the Winthrop Harbor Lions Club. Our next award is the Jubilee Director's Choice, which goes to the best musical entry in this year's parade. And the 2016 winner is the Zion Benton Township High School Marching Zeebies.
How did you get chosen to come and represent?
I'm the dormager, and the other two dormagers are the deep dogs.
You could've just said I was the best one.
That went without saying. Our next award is the Sweepstakes Trophy, which goes to that entry representing the best animation or humor. And a perennial winner and a crowd favorite is the Beach Community Church Puppets for Christ.
So how did you guys get chosen? Because you were the puppets.
Congratulations. Here you go.
Our next award is the President's Choice, which goes to the most original entry in the 2016 Jubilee Days Festival Parade. And this year's winner is the Waukegan Masonic Temple. Our next award is the Grand Jubilee Trophy, which goes to this year's most beautiful entry, and that goes to the IBEW Local 150 Union. And our final award of the evening is the Mayor's Trophy, which is given out to the overall best entry in the 2016 Jubilee Days Festival Parade. And the winner this year is Our Lady of Humility School. That's it. Congratulations to all the winners, and once again, thank you very much.
It's with a great deal of pleasure that I have this opportunity to recognize Mr. Rich Walker for all that he's done for our community and for all that he's done for Jubilee Days. This is his 30th year of being the chair of this committee. And if any of you have ever been involved with running a festival or a carnival or a community event, you know how difficult and extremely complicated and how you really have to motivate people to do what they're supposed to do and that they promise. And Rich has been wonderful doing that for these 30 years. Not only is he a great executive director, but personally, he's a great friend. He worked at Zion Park District. He started in 1986, shortly before I started working there. And we worked together for a number of years, and Rich was the director of the last five years. He's here and retired. How long ago? Three years. Three years ago, three and a half. So if you would come up here, this is presented to Rich Walker in appreciation for 30 years of service as executive director of the Zion Jubilee Days Festival, 1986 to 2016.
You want the lots?
Oh, sure, I need the lots.
Keep the fingerprints off it till you sue.
Item six on the agenda are citizens' comments. And we have W.C. Brenner from Zion.
Mayor Hill, Honorable Sirs, gentle ladies, the last several city council meetings, you have debated and then acted upon tree removal in the City of Zion, all of which I understand. Recently, though, I have been meditating on the situation, and I inquire, inquiring minds want to know is the phrase. I am not trying to bring embarrassment. What about non-city public lands? And I refer specifically to park district property, school district property, library property, the so-called gorilla in the house, state park property. Do the monies that you have voted to dedicate to tree removal include these properties? Or will action be taken on diseased trees and those properties? What will happen? And again, I don't ask to embarrass. I ask out of interest in the community.
The money that we've appropriated for the tree removal is on city property, public property only. The trees that are located in the school district property, park district property, or any other taxing body will be the responsibility of those individual taxing bodies to bring them down. Ours, we're not even, we're not even close to having enough money to do all that. But that will be up to each individual taxing body to take care of what's on their own property.
I do thank you, sir, sirs, gentle ladies, for your time, your courtesy, and your response to this question.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. Item number seven is a consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on September 6, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. Bills, vouchers 124471 through 124862 drawn on First Merritt Bank, total $1,164,816.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill? Mayor Hill?
Item number eight is discussion authorization and approval. Item A is considered extending the contract for Hometown Electric for streetlight maintenance and repair for Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. The current agreement between the City of Zion and our electrical contractor, Hometown Electric, was executed on September 22, 2015. The agreement has provisions to have it automatically renewed, canceled upon 30 days written notice by either party, and the right to negotiate price adjustments at the end of each year. Staff will negotiate a price reduction of $25 per hour for streetlight repairs and $30 per hour for birdseed streetlight repairs. Staff recommends extending the contract with Hometown Electric for an additional year for the renegotiated price adjustments.
Is there a motion?
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion?
Just one quick question. Did we have to give up anything in these negotiations, or just labor costs went down?
Just like they agreed to drop their labor costs.
Further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8B is considered quote from Pentegra Systems of Addison, Illinois, for replacement of the DVR system for the public works facility's security cameras for Director Colangelo.
Thank you again, Your Honor. In your package, they quote obtained through our IT consultant for replacement of DVR system for the public works facility's security cameras. The hard drive of the current system, which was installed 2005, has failed and no longer supported. The quote for the new system allows for the use of the current cameras installed on the premises and the ability to upgrade in the future. The quote is from the current system provider. Staff request and recommends accepting the quote from Tegra Systems of Addison, Illinois for $3,153.43. Funding would be split between the public works and waterfront building line items.
Is there a motion? Motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson? Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8C is consider approval of memorandum of understanding between Midwestern Regional Medical Center and the Zion Fire and Rescue Department for the emergency transport of MRMC patients per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you're aware, we have a contract in place now with CTC, or MRMC, to transport patients from their two guest quarters and their contracted hotels that are stable directly to Midwestern as a direct end. When they constructed the new inpatient tower, the top two floors, sixth and seventh, are actually guest quarters and not theoretically patient rooms or the hospital bed. So they've asked us to include that in our MOU. And so to attach the MOU to your packet there, the only changes you'll see is a new effective date of September 26. That's the date that the guest quarters open at CTC, MRMC. And then they add tower guest quarters as one of the facilities. So any patients we actually transport from the sixth or seventh floor as a direct end down to the third floor would be invoiced as we do with any other other facilities. Just requesting that we approve the MOU as written.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Is the rate the same as the previous?
Yes.
I just gotta, I don't, I can't pass this up. I just gotta ask this question. They're gonna call an ambulance to move somebody from the fifth floor to the second floor?
Sixth and seventh down to probably the third, and the reason being, the hospital, the way they have it set up, the hospital is a hospital, but the sixth and seventh floor is considered a business occupancy. And being a business occupancy, they treat that differently. And so they will have staff that responds, but they want us responding basically because it's a, if a patient is there and they can't go downstairs, they have to be transported offsite anyways. So we're already there. They're looking at it as a business, I can see it not a hospital. And that's how they get, I shouldn't say they want to get around the rule, but that's what they're being told is the best option.
Okay, that's good for us, but it seems strange that we're...
It does seem strange, but...
And it could be a transport to another facility.
It could be.
Right.
The other thing is if a patient calls on their cellphone from one of those facilities, from the sixth or seventh floor, Midwestern may never know that we're coming.
Okay.
Should we radio and say, hey, we're coming to your facility? So that's all part of our operational plan, but it's different.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8D is request permission to develop an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Gurnee for ETSB consolidation for Chief Lewis.
Thank you again, Your Honor. So as everyone on the council should be aware by now, the State of Illinois has put a mandate on any community with a population of service area of less than 25,000 to consolidate with another dispatch center or PSAP, as they call it, Public Safety Answering Point, to form a service area of 25,000 people. So our E91 board has been working on this probably since about February. The deadline was July 21 of 20, I'm sorry, July 1 of 2016 to have a plan in place, July 1 of 2017 to put the plan into effect. So we've met with Winthrop Harbor, and we met with Gurnee in the beginning. And we have representatives from Gurnee here if there's any questions. And so going back and forth, the end result is, when we met with Gurnee, Gurnee has more to offer us for the future than we would by consolidating with Winthrop Harbor. We're gonna get more technology out of this. We'll have IT support, staff, better opportunities for our dispatchers to move up into higher positions, supervisory positions. As the future goes in the State of Illinois, you don't know what direction they're ever going. Right now, they said 25,000. Five years from now, they say, hey, this is a great deal. Let's go to make it 50,000. Being with Gurnee, that prevents us from, again, having to consolidate with somebody else who did it with the Harvard. So before we made a final decision as an E91 board, Chief Dumian, Commissioner McCullough, McCullough, I'm sorry, a few years ahead, Commissioner McDowell and myself met with Chief Brumlich up in Winthrop Harbor to discuss it, to see if there's anything that we could do at the last minute. And the end result was no. Chief Brumlich, they're looking at the Village of Mundeline. They were also looking at us. And the direction we were headed and the direction they were headed just didn't make for a good consolidation. So they understood our position. Their only request was that we continue to work together as public entities, which will always happen. So the end result was, we had a meeting with dispatchers today. They're all on board with what we're doing. So now we're seeking approval. The next step would be an intergovernmental agreement. We'll draft an intergovernmental agreement, bring that back to council for approval in our governmental agreement, and then we start putting wires together, buttons together, and making it happen. We're hoping to have this done by May 1 of 2017, July 1 at the latest. And I'm ready for questions.
Okay, thank you. Would, and I guess, I'm just wondering if one of you three would explain in, I guess, basic terms what this means for us, how it's gonna be funded, whose employees are they, are they, and all those things that are involved with this that'll give us a little heads up before the intergovernmental agreement comes?
So this is gonna, all this information will be put in our governmental agreement. So talk so far, they proposed the fee that's a net letter you have in front of you. And that's basically the fee of what it costs us right now to operate our 911 center with E91 funds. And so according to Mr. Nabel's numbers here, there could be a little cost savings. What'd you say, in the first year?
Probably about at least $50,000 of general fund savings over what we're currently spending on all of our dispatch costs, liability insurance, health insurance, things like that.
Do you have those figures? Because we don't have them in front of us. We have what Gurnee is requesting, but not what it currently costs us or what our projected costs would be in the future. But you have those numbers in front of you?
I have a rough estimate, yes. I have copies for everyone.
What you were saying is that you're anticipating there to be a slight cost savings to us?
Correct.
And all that will be spelled out in the intergovernmental agreement?
Right.
Okay.
And I can put together specific line items from the current, or from the budget, showing those, the breakdown of what we currently spend. Again, it's general fund, payroll taxes, INRF, and then liability insurance as well that would all be basically contracted out as part of this process. But we can put that together for a formal presentation with the IDA that does not take into consideration the E911 funds, which are separate, separate funds, which would be part, again, part of the IDA, on how those would be allocated as well.
And just so, I'm sure that I understand this. This is, this request is for permission to put together the agreement. I would think, I guess, as I look around here, that if we're gonna put people through a, jumping through a whole lot of hoops to put an intergovernmental agreement together, that our vote tonight would indicate that if things come out like we think they're gonna come out, that we will proceed with this. But this is just a request to begin the intergovernmental agreement. Okay.
So as far as personnel go, that was your second question or one of your questions. So personnel, we met with the dispatchers today at 3 o'clock, Chief Dumian, Chief Henderson, myself, and a couple of representatives from Gurnee. So that they would hear from us before they heard it from the news or rumor on the street. And at this point, the proposal offers anywhere from six to seven positions to our personnel. They would still have to interview with Gurnee, you know, but it's their option. And if they did, then they would become a Gurnee employee at the end. The employees had concerns, as would any employee, but at the end, they all understood and agreed. And they're looking, some are looking to move forward right away. They're excited about it. Some are still a little hesitant. As for the public, they will probably not even see one difference. They'll dial 911. Somebody's gonna answer the phone. It gets dispatched to a road officer or police, fire unit, as they would right now. There'll be provisions for those non-911 calls. You know, somebody calls, got a water leak in my home, sewer system leak, tree down. Those would be routed appropriately, and again, the citizens probably will see no difference in operations from there.
One of the issues that I've heard raised, and I don't know if it's valid or not, and I'll just ask you, is that it's been expressed that there's an advantage to having somebody who's answering the phone knowing the community that they're dealing with. And I don't necessarily, I can't really figure that out, but is that true or not?
We discussed that too today at the meeting, and there was probably some validity to that in the beginning. So you look at our Zion dispatchers. Many of them grew up in Zion, know Zion. They've worked in Zion for 10-plus years. You start to know the streets. You start to know the repeat offenders. You start to know your people. So when someone calls dispatch and says, hey, so-and-so's behind Salem Foods, and they're doing this, our dispatchers know Salem Foods. They know the alley behind Salem Foods. They know 25th Street. They know the route. On the flip side, if we hire a new Zion dispatcher tomorrow, they don't know any of this, and they have to learn that process. And that's what we've used as a similarity with Gurnee. So the idea is when we start this on day number one, and I'll allow Gurnee to jump in whenever they want, we currently operate with two dispatchers. Those dispatchers are handling police and fire calls at the same time, including non-911 calls. Gurnee is looking at a model of this goes through with a fortified dispatch position model. So there'll be one Zion police dispatcher who's gonna handle only Zion police. One only gonna handle Gurnee police. One's gonna handle all fire traffic. One's gonna be what they call the call taker, and occasionally, there could be a dispatch supervisor as well. So now you have the ability where, if I take one of our dispatches right now, and we have a police incident going on and a fire at the same time, there's a lot of switching frequencies, and, you know, you might lose transmissions. Not sure who you're talking about. In this model, if we move, they're dedicated. So that Zion police dispatcher is only listening to Zion police. And the idea is, in the beginning, for probably the first year, or however it works out in the model, is that Zion dispatcher will be a Zion employee or a former Zion employee.
Is it, will it, if Winthrop Harbor would so choose in a couple future months to, that they would like to consolidate with Gurnee and Zion, is that a possibility? Is that still out there?
Um, I need that Gurnee to answer.
Hi there, Mayor and Board. My name's John Kavan. I'm Deputy Chief with the Gurnee Fire Department. I'm part of our consolidation task force. We've reached out to Winthrop Harbor. We're actively sharing information with them. We are open to the possibility with them. We've even thrown out to them that their police has a computer system that's kind of unique to them and Mundeline, and if they decide to go in that route, we would still be open to just their fire dispatching, because the continuity within fire, how much Zion Fire and Winthrop Harbor work together. So we've reached out to them. We're definitely open. We're also talking with, it's pretty open about this, we're talking to Beach Park Fire as well. They're very, very interested with us due to the fact, how well they work with Zion, but they also come work with ourselves, and we currently dispatch for Newport Fire. So we really see us all being in one center together as something we're gonna see efficiencies with, and we're excited about that opportunity. So yes, we are open to working with the harbor. We are currently outreach and talking. Our police chief and our police chief have had conversations, and we've actually sent out a survey, which we initially sent out, going back nine months ago to you, and that's how our conversation started.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or any further discussion?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor? You had a meeting with the dispatchers today. What was their attitude or general feeling that you get from that meeting?
As Chief Lewis said, it was kind of split. There's some concerns, obviously, about their future, and some are excited about the merger. They see an opportunity for advancement. They will have an opportunity to apply to Gurnee and go to an interview, and Gurnee will make probably the final decision on who they hire. Obviously, those are gonna be employees of Gurnee, not Zion, and I think that's only fair that we leave the final decision to them. There's just some, obviously, some anxiety over it. You know, they wanna know if they're gonna have a job in six to nine months from now.
You're saying that the whole day, they will have to apply for it through Gurnee, and then Gurnee will make the decision whether or not they're hired? Is that...
Yeah, they're gonna interview with Gurnee, and they'll make the final decision on which employees we're gonna pick up.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we begin this process of an intergovernmental agreement. And like you said, Mayor, it does seem like there's a two, it's a two-step process. So if I understand this correctly, we're agreeing to, for 120 days, to develop this intergovernmental agreement?
Well, actually, the hope is to have an intergovernmental agreement approved way ahead of that 120.
All right, so we have up to 120 days, and then the second step will be actually approving that.
Yeah, my guess is, and, you know, I'll defer it to Gurnee a little bit, but if it's approved tonight to draft an IGA, they're gonna take it back to their board. They're gonna draft the IGA, as they will become the PSAP, and then we'll be working probably a series of meetings over the next several weeks, bring it back. They have to have attorney review from both sides. When it's all finalized, bring it back to council, and I would like to see that done probably, I'd like to see it before the end of December, you know? That way, come January 1, we're just doing the infrastructure changes, technology changes, and then hopefully by May 1, we can make a switch.
Yeah, and we're being mandated to do it. So it's not like we have an option. We must consolidate, and thank you for the work that you've done.
You're welcome.
And my motion is to approve this agreement.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second.
To move forward.
Move forward, yeah. It's with the two-step process.
Yeah. We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8E is consider appointments to Citizens United for Better Zion Cups per Commissioner Hill. Oh, no, it says commission. I have a very bad cold. I'm reading things, it affects my eyes. It's with a great deal of pleasure that I have two more appointments to the committee, the steering committee, and they are Linda Sandoval, who has been involved from the very beginning, and Kathy Champine, and some of you may not know her, but she's the woman who's in the back row, who's been in a number of our city council meetings, and writes for the local paper every now and then, and I'd like to get a motion in a second on their, approval on their appointments.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item F is consider renewal of alley lease with John and Janet Spencer, the west 200 feet of the east-west alley north of and adjoining 3219 Bethel Boulevard, per clerk Burkemper.
The city has leased the west 200 feet of the alley running in an east-west direction north of and adjoining the property of 3219 Bethel Boulevard since 1992. It's changed hands twice since then. The city council approved the lease agreement with new property owners John and Janet Spencer in October of last year, with a one-year term and an annual fee of $100. This current lease expires on September 30, 2016. I respectfully request that the council approve renewal of this alley lease with John and Janet Spencer for the period of October 1, 2016, through September 30 of 2017, with an annual fee of $100.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number nine is departmental commentary. Is there any departmental commentary? Trees?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Gonna start taking down trees tomorrow.
The Wade County Clerk's Office is in dire need of election judges for the upcoming election. I have some of these brochures, if anybody's interested, and I will leave them on the back table, and it does come with a salary, so give you a chance to make some money.
How much is the salary?
Depends on what type of a judge you are. Could be up to $180.
Item number 10 is announcements. September 29, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is the last day of the Zion Farmers Market, Sheridan Road and Shiloh Boulevard. October 4 at 7:00 p.m., there's a Zion City Council meeting. October 18 at 6:30, there's a Zion Township meeting. October 18 at 7:00 p.m., there's a Zion City Council meeting. October 30, from 2:00 to 5:00, is the Zion Trick or Treat hours. That's October 30 from 2:00 to 5:00. Anything else? We, item number 11 is a closed session pursuant to five ILCS 120/2 open meetings for discussion pending litigation. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?